Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the OJ Roberts School Directors Regular Business Meeting on Monday, September 29th, 2025. This is the OJ Roberts Board of School Directors Regular Business Meeting being held on September 29, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and Presentation of Colors by the Navy Junior Reserves Officer Training Corps, followed by a moment of silence. Present colors. I pledge allegiance to the class. Please join us in a moment of silence as we reflect on those serving in the United States Armed Forces, both past and present, the elected leaders for the state of Pennsylvania and elected leaders of our nation. We have much to be thankful for in our community. Color Guard, post colors. Please be seated. Agenda item 3.1, an executive session announcement. The Board of School Directors met on the following dates in executive session to discuss items in one or more of the following areas: legal personnel or real estate matters on September 15, 2025. Agenda item four, the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Stout.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. I'd like to start off tonight by welcoming Vansh Agarwal, who is our new Student Council Executive President, who will be doing the Student Council Report for this evening. So, welcome.
All elementary schools across the district have experienced a very positive start to the 2025-2026 school year. Each school community has come together through engaging events such as open house, back-to-school nights, back-to-school bashes, and family PTA gatherings, all of which have helped establish strong connections with families and set the tone for a successful year. Back-to-school routines have been implemented smoothly, and new families have been warmly welcomed into both our schools and the district. In addition, the launch of our new ELA curriculum has been met with enthusiasm from staff, students, and families, supporting our collective focus on literacy growth. Our schools have completed initial assessments in reading, writing, and math to help guide instruction and ensure students receive the support they need. Our students have demonstrated tremendous energy, resilience, and commitment throughout the opening weeks, and we look forward to continuing to strengthen our partnership with families as we build on this ground foundation. The middle school is off to a great start for the school year. This past Friday, all eighth-grade students attended an assembly delivered by the students in our high school, NJROTC program. They learned about the program and the expectations for those who may wish to participate. Those interested in learning more about the program will have the opportunity to participate as eighth-grade students during the flex periods. Speaking of flex periods, students are loving the opportunity presented to them every Tuesday and Thursday to participate in activities of their choosing that are offered by teachers. Activities that are offered can be academic or recreational in nature, and each week, students must select the activities they wish to attend the following week. On October 1st, we will have our kickoff assembly for our annual fundraiser. This is always an exciting day, as students always go crazy for the celebrity ducks that they can earn as a part of their participation. Be sure to ask your child about it. This past Thursday, the middle school hosted our first PBIS pop-up event of the school year. Students who acted fast were able to cash in their PBIS reward points to participate in playing pickleball or enjoy some quiet time in the library with their favorite book. We will offer different pop-up rewards and raffles throughout the year, and students are always able to use their points in our PBIS store. We have had a great start to the year at the high school. This year, we have welcomed 408 ninth-grade students to the building. In support of their transition, all ninth-grade students are taking part in an eight-part ninth-grade seminar. Students have already participated in the first two sessions, which focused on introducing students to the staff, building good habits, and getting exposure to all the different ways to get involved at the high school. Our 12th-grade students are in the midst of preparing for their post-second-year careers. Students have been attending Wildcat future sessions, evening workshops hosted by the council department, and we have already hosted 45 different colleges this year. Looking ahead, we will be holding OJR's 54th Annual Cavalcade of Bands this Saturday, beginning at 4:00 PM in the stadium. This following week, we will hold our homecoming pep rally for the students on the afternoon of Friday, October 10th, followed by the football game on Friday evening, and a homecoming dance for 10th to 12th grade students on Saturday evening. We will have a separate dance for our ninth-grade students on Saturday, November 8th. PSATs will take place for all 10th and 11th grade students on Tuesday, October 14th, during the school day. We will be following a modified schedule to accommodate the exam on that day. Students and families are reminded to check the Wildcat Weekly Update Newsletter, distributed via Parent Square on Sundays, for the most up-to-date information regarding the high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Vansh, and welcome to the new role. We look forward to having you here with us this school year. This is a reminder that Monday, October 20th, is a professional development day for our staff. There is no school for students on October 20th. We will be hosting a public town hall on Wednesday, November 12th, at the District Service Center. Further details can be found on the district website. I just want to point out there are two retirees on tonight's agenda, and neither of those individuals are here, but Mike Massisak, who middle school maintenance for the past 13 years and has relocated to North Carolina. And then also, we have Terry Lawhorn, who's our district courier, who has been with us since 2011. So, I wish both of those individuals much health and happiness in their retirement. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Stout. And welcome once again. Welcome, Vansh, and we appreciate you taking your time to represent the students this year. Moving on to Agenda Item 5, Public Comment, 5.1, Public Comment on Agenda Items. There are two opportunities for public comment. The first section is for information proposals and statements from individuals or delegations pertaining to items on the agenda that will be voted on tonight. Speakers are to indicate your name, township of residence, and the items on the agenda to which your comments are addressed. Speakers will be limited to not more than three minutes. Please understand that this is not a time for dialogue with the board. Rather, the board will listen to all comments and consider them in future deliberations. The second section will be at the end of the meeting, and it's for residents to speak on any item. If you have any question for the school board, you may email all Board of School Directors at schoolboardmembers@ojrsd.net. For anyone online who would like to make a comment, please use the raise hand function. When it is your turn to speak, please state your name and township of residence.
Good evening, Dr. Stout, Madam President, Board members, community, and staff. My name is Colleen Blute, North Coventry East Coventry Township. I'm here for Agenda Item 1312, turf fields and track replacement. The turf the board is discussing on this agenda should have been updated four to five years ago when its lifespan expired. On Monday, September 15th, 2025, at Committee of the Whole Working Session, I was in a rude and gleeful tone denied public comment on this agenda item by Madam President, who had previously stated public comment will be after each agenda item. It didn't happen. According to PSBA, whom I contacted at a school public meeting, is to allow time for public comment. There were two community members present at the end of the meeting for a minimum-maximum of six minutes of conversation. You couldn't hold off for six minutes. Could you please look at me? Thank you. At the September 15th meeting, the members of the board seemed more concerned about the building construction damaging the turf and gave the appearance of the building construction first and then the turf replacement. Should the turf be damaged by the building construction company, the construction company's insurance covers the damage done. Am I correct, sir?
Yeah, I'm not answering your questions.
The school board worries should be about the safety of the athletes, not the damage to the turf. What would the financial liability be if a student athlete was injured because of the school board's misjudgment? A young adult's life is worth more than $41,790, which is the estimated cost. Girls' and boys' soccer, field hockey, girls' lacrosse, I think, boys' lacrosse, cross-country, band cheerleaders, graduation ceremony, and community events use the field and do not wear helmets. Here's the question for the board. What would happen if a non-helmet-wearing athlete on the field fell and was severely injured? Your responsibility would far exceed the cost of the turf. Please don't say it could not or it will not happen. There are no guarantees in life. You, as the school district's Board of Directors, could be responsible for willful, wanton misconduct, knowing that the turf is unsafe because of its age and usage. My suggestion to you is to replace the turf as soon as possible for the sake of the athletes and the community members. You also might want to look at and review the IDA specs for the ramps that lead to the bleachers. The inclination slope and the length have changed. These ramps were not workable for wheelchair-bound and physically handicapped individuals as of two years ago. I literally tried to push up a gentleman-wife in a wheelchair up the ramp, and I had to get the assistance of another man to help me push her up, and she was not an overweight woman. And if I'm correct, when construction is done, your requirements from IDA must be upheld and followed. Thank you. Let's get that turf ready for the kids, okay? Thank you.
Hi, Heather McCurry, East Coventry. You guys know the topic I'm going to talk about, and it fits on so many agenda items here. I'm going to talk about where's the mock trial approval club for tonight on the agenda. There's 36 plus-
Could you please name an agenda item?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll start out with 12.4 Extracurricular and Supplemental Activities, and also wrap that into 13.8 Student Activities. And I can also call it on 8.1, which is donations. So, there is 36-plus children sitting in a room wanting to compete on the mock trial club, which is a recognized club in this district. And that actually comes under the Equal Access Act. I don't know if any of you know what that is, but that says, right, that if one extracurricular club meets, then all of them get to meet. So, what is happening with the mock trial club right now? When I started that club seven years ago with Keith Morris, and it was a brave thing we did, we serviced over 110 children. We gave that program to teachers, students, many of them. We also gave that experience to Representative Paul Freel's daughter, who actually credited her success at John Hopkins with that program. And we had a problem here last year, right? And so, we had a lot of emails behind the scenes. I came a couple of times and said, please fix this for the children. So, I wrote in, and I gave some information to the two teachers who are now on the website, and they are not on the agenda. I don't understand why. There's been plenty of time since the school year started. Meanwhile, I received one, two, three, four invites, because I'm the recognized mock trial liaison for OJ Roberts. That includes two invites to University of Pennsylvania. They're holding a spot for OJ Roberts students to compete in the virtual tournament that we did last year. This is the feeder into the Ben Franklin Invitational. That actually comes up next. That invite comes out on October 30th. We also have the Penn State people wrote to me asking for us to participate. That's a classic one that happens right around in the wintertime, right before the BFI. But also, Malvern Prep wrote me and said, please bring your team, Heather, right? So, what are we doing, guys? When I stepped out in the spring, actually, it wasn't the spring. It was in a desperate attempt that there could be some help from the administration to recognize the students that wanted to continue on, because they had self-organized themselves. The vice president should have been allowed to take over as president, and she was not. Title IX problem there is, look, I'm looking at it. There's an IEP student on the team that's been shut out of the way the student, the way the club's being run now, excuse me. I'm told that students are writing in, and that it's filled up, and they're told they can't participate. That was an after-school program on Wednesdays. The plan was to add so that we could have everybody participate. We had at least 22 children last year and more. The problem last year was the couple officers did not want to allow the other students to compete, because they just wanted on their resume. I think that something needs to be done here, and it's not fair to do that to the students of this district. It's actually against the law. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Woolfery. I'm a resident of South Coventry and alumni of OJ Roberts. I want to talk about, it was 7.7, was the acknowledgement of, see, the bus drivers. They made a write-to-no request earlier this year for documentation of training that's provided to the bus drivers, specifically in relation to the use of the school bus arm. And I came back with, I was told that there was no responsive records. And then, I had the experience to have a bus attempt to get me to pass it while it had its yellow lights flashing. And I refused until they turned off their yellow lights. And then, I passed the bus. But then, that goes on to, later on, I'll be talking about it more, because I can't find something to identify it on this agenda, but about the whole bus patrol system and how it's broken. But the bus drivers, by a bus driver doing that with the yellow flashing lights, asking, like flashing his head high beams at me, encouraging me to pass him, would be a crime, as far as the Department of Transportation's judge told me on a phone call when they were adjudicating a stop sign arm violation that one of my vehicles, wasn't me, but one of my vehicles had gone, had received. And that person said, I don't care what the law is, as you shouldn't not be getting a ticket for yellow flashing lights. You should only get the ticket if the stop sign arm is out and the red lines are going. You don't get a ticket for yellow. But he didn't care about that. He just gave me a ticket anyway. But, um, so, I'll have more about that later. But, just to let you know, the school bus drivers are not being trained in how to use that school bus arm. They're not being trained to not, they're not being trained, how should I say, to not have the public pass them when they have yellow lights, when you have Department of Transportation just giving out tickets because people are passing the yellow light. So, they're, it's a form of entrapment, as far as I can tell. I have more to talk about bus patrol in a few minutes. Thank you.
Christopher C.
Yes, Christopher Carroll, West Vincent Township. A number of years ago, when my son was-
Mr. Carroll, excuse me, could you please name the agenda item at which you're speaking toward?
Okay, this is not public comment right now?
It is public comment on agenda items only. There is public comment for all items at the end of the meeting.
My mistake. See you then.
Thank you.
Do we get to talk on another agenda item? I want to talk on 7.6. I want to know where in the student activity accounts Odyssey of Mind is. Odyssey of Mind is a program that's open for all students in the school. Of 100 clubs on the website, there's only five that go to academics. And Odyssey of Mind, there's only three that allow you to compete nationally. Odyssey of Mind, Mock Trial, and Deca. That's it. So, Odyssey of Mind is missing from the student activity accounts. So, who is paying for that? Is the district giving funds? Because if they are, it needs to be on there. Are parents private pay? Is that a private pay club now? Because it's on as one of the 100 clubs that are open to the students. So, students don't even understand how these student activity clubs work, right? They need to understand that if they want to start a club, they're allowed under the Equal Access Act. They tell them they need an advisor, and the problem is, when a teacher doesn't want to do it, that's when somebody like me can step up and say, hey, I'm going to give 150 hours a year for seven years. Attorney time is over $350,000 for me alone, right? And so, they're allowed to start a club, whatever they want. They need an advisor. If they can't find an advisor that's paid, then they can get a volunteer. I think that needs to be explained to them.
Thank you. We're moving on to Agenda Item 6, Board Committee Reports, 6.1, Working Session. A working session was held on September 15, 2025. At 6:00 PM, the following committees met at this time: Curriculum and Special Education, Finance, Building and Grounds, and Legislative and Policy. 6.2, the Chester County Intermediate Unit. Ms. Munson.
The Chester County Intermediate Unit met at the CCDC Angle Education Center. That's right near the Avon Grove High School. It's a former Avon Grove Middle School building, and it has been reconditioned so that the CCIU can use it. It's also forming an administrative building for the Avon Grove District as well. But we have space for 150 students, and we had a ribbon cutting that evening, and they announced that 70 students had already started in that building. So, it's going to house some programs for our preschoolers and also for the very intensive student needs, where students need very intensive physical, mental support. So, let's see. In addition to that, we had a regular business meeting. There were concerns over the House Appropriations Bill at the federal level containing a $12 billion cut, and also state budgets being delayed. As far as how that affected the CCIU, we did vote to open up a bond in case the state does not pass the budget so that the organization will be able to meet its bills. And it was pointed out at that meeting that any intermediate unit or district who does take out a bond has to pay credit or pay interest back on that bond. And so, that falls on the taxpayers. That is then a higher burden on taxpayers to have to take out a bond because of the delay and then pay interest back. So, that was one point that everybody should understand. I don't know, you know, what plans we have to cover our budget, but various districts are coming up with various plans to ensure that there is no educational impact to the state budget being delayed. Also, there were discussions around, let's see, one of the good things that seemed to be coming out of the, I think it was the House, was it House or State? I'm sorry, I didn't have that in my notes, but there's going to be a handwriting requirement proposed, so we should get to know about that. And then, also, at the Chester County level, there are discussions with law enforcement and the FBI around safety and security and ensuring that the communications during an event are as watertight as we can make them and on the kind of timelines that parents expect, because it is normal for a FBI or local law enforcement agency to not want to release too much information, but we understand that parents need a high level and a high frequency of communication if they are worried about their children. Also, there was a PAEA sports grant of $365,000 used to support 1,700 students and 18 educators. So, that was some good news as well. And also, the next meeting will be on Wednesday, October 15th, at 7:30 at the CCIU Learning Center in Coatesville. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Munson. 6.3, Curriculum and Special Education Committee. Ms. Sabo.
The Curriculum and Special Education Committee met during the September Working Session. There was one informational item on the agenda, the role of the instructional coach. The instructional coaches present information about their roles in the district. They are an integral part of professional development for our faculty and all throughout the district. Coaches are responsible for the new teacher building meetings for induction. They often facilitate faculty meetings to provide training for ongoing initiatives, and they model lessons and provide feedback for teachers. Coaches have network opportunities within the Chester County Intermediate Unit, as well as within the district. This year, our coaches are providing professional development for ELA mathematics, IA, sorry, AI strategies, and restorative practices, and among other things that teachers may require more help on. Our district has made use of our instructional coaches for over 20 years. The Curriculum and Special Education Department is also working on preparing information for the board workshop related to the student assessment data that we are actively collecting. Thank you. That is all.
Thank you, Ms. Sabo. 6.4, Finance, Building, and Grounds Committee. Mr. Harmonos.
The Finance, Building, and Grounds Committee met on September 15th. Three items were discussed: the East Nantmead Land Development Agreement for French Creek, which was moved to full board as item 13.10 tonight. The geotechnical testing for the main campus was discussed. That was also moved on to item 13.11 for tonight. And finally, the track turf replacement project studied by KNW Engineers, which was also moved on under item 13.12 for tonight. Additionally, tonight, we have two additional items on the agenda for tonight. Item 13.9 is a stormwater inspection by KNW Engineers for their yearly inspection. And then, item 13 is three professional service maintenance agreements, one for the American Red Cross to do American Red Cross training, one for RTC Security to provide additional security when needed, and one for the Pathway School to provide aid services for the 2025-2026 school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harmonos. 6.5, Legislative and Policy Committee. Ms. Evans.
Yes, the Legislative and Policy Committee also met at the September 15th Working Session. We reviewed Policy 137, home education programs, Policy 204, attendance, and Policy 827, conflicts of conflict of interest. All of those policies and the attendant regulations, sorry. All of the policies were moved to the full board for a first reading on tonight's agenda as Agenda Item 7.8.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Personnel Committee, I don't know if Mr. Chester is-
Sure, I'd be glad to give the report.
Dr. Otoli, thank you.
No report.
Thank you, Dr. Otoli. A reminder to all board members that after tonight's meeting, the changes and adjustments in committee assignments will take effect. If you have any questions or concerns, you can, of course, come to me or to the administrative liaison that is assigned to your committee. Thank you. Okay, we are moving into sevens. The recommended routine matters. Agenda Item 7.1, motion to approve recommended routine matters as consent item 72.7.9. May I have a motion to approve the following routine matters, which are 7.2 through 7.9 as action consent items?
So moved.
Mr. Harmonos. Dr. Otoli, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda Item 8, Recommended Routine Matters, 8.1, the acknowledgement receipt of donations, contributions, and gifts. This month, we are acknowledging, at French Creek Elementary School, French Creek Valley PTA colleagues, friends, and family of Cheryl Ann Barinsky donated a six-foot portable bench with a memorial plaque centered in the back of the bench valued approximately $1,254. And at West Vincent PTA's, at West Vincent Elementary School, the PTA donated $1,500 for staff t-shirts. May I have a motion to acknowledge the receipt of donations, contributions, and gifts as presented?
So moved.
Ms. Evans?
Second.
Ms. Chevelle Fuller, any discussion? Once again, thank you to our PTAs. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda Item 9, the approval of routine items as consent items, 9.1, the motion to approve routine matters as consent items, 9.2 through 9.5. May I have a motion for, to approve the following routine matters, which are items 9.2 through 9.5 as action consent items? Please.
So moved.
Mr. Harmonos.
Second.
Dr. Otoli, any discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda Item 10, 10.1, Board Discussion. Is there any board discussion at this time? Okay, Agenda Item 11, 11.1, Old Business.
The Old Business, Mrs. Peters.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dan Sala. Agenda Item 12, New Business, Approval of Personnel Matters as Consent Items. 12.1, The Motion to Approve Personnel Matters, Consent Items, 12.2 through 12.5. May I have a motion to approve the following personnel matters, which are Items 12.2 through 12.4 as action consent items?
So moved.
I'm sorry. Okay, so. Okay, so I think there was a missed print on my agenda because it goes through 12.4. Okay, so. I was reading from that. Yeah, I have a print there. That's okay. Okay, so may I have a motion to approve the following personnel matters, which are Items 12.2 through 12.5 as action consent items as presented?
So moved.
Ms. Evans?
Second.
Mr. Harmonos, any discussion?
Point of clarification, I see a 12 dot six on the online agenda.
So the 12.6, that is recognition. It does not require a vote. So we are only voting to 12.5.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes, I also had a question on that when I saw the agenda earlier. So we have a motion and a second for the personnel matters, which are Items 12.2 through 12.5 as action consent items. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Okay. Agenda Item 13.1, The Approval of Out-of-State Overnight Student Trips. May I have a motion for the approval of the out-of-state overnight trip students as, student trips as presented?
So moved.
Ms. Sabo?
Second.
Mr. Harmonos, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.2, The Approval of Conference Attendance. May I have a motion for the approval of conference attendance as presented?
So moved.
Ms. Sabo?
Second.
Dr. Otoli, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.3, The Approval of the 2026 PSBA Slate of Candidates. May I have a motion for the approval of the 2026 PSBA State Slate of Candidates?
So moved.
Ms. Munson?
Second.
Ms. Chevelle Fuller? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.4, The Approvals, sorry, Policies for Second Reading. May I have a motion for the approval of policies for second reading as presented? And that's Policy 317, 317.1, 320, 718, 801, and 801.1.
So moved.
Ms. Evans?
Second.
Mr. Harmonos, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.5, The Ratification of Homebound Instruction. May I have a motion for the ratification of homebound instruction as presented?
So moved.
Ms. Sabo?
Second.
Dr. Otoli, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.6, The Approval of a Confidential Settlement Agreement and Release. May I have a motion for the approval of a confidential settlement and release for student 2025-26-2 as presented?
So moved.
Ms. Sabo?
Second.
Ms. Evans, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.7, The Approval of a Confidential Settlement Agreement and Release. May I have a motion for the approval of a confidential settlement agreement and release for student 2025-26-3 as presented?
So moved.
Ms. Sabo?
Second.
Dr. Otoli, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.8, The Approval of Student Activity Club Advisors and Student Officers. May I have a motion for the approval of Student Activity Club Advisors and Student Officers in accordance with provisions of Section 511 of the Pennsylvania School Code for the 2025-2026 school year as presented?
So moved.
Ms. Chevelle Fuller?
Second.
Mr. Harmonos, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.9, The Approval for Addendum Number Three, With KNW Engineers to Conduct One-Site Visit Per Year for Five Years After the Notice of Termination is Filed and Approved with Chester County Conservation District. May I have a motion for the approval of Addendum Number Three to the Original Service Agreement with KNW Engineers to conduct one-site visit per year, four or five years, after the notice of termination is filed and approved, Chester County Conservation District to Observe the Stormwater Discharge Flow Path to Note Any Areas of Potential Erosion. The Cost is $5,940 as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Harmonos?
Second.
Ms. Evans, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.10, The Approval of East Antmead Land Development and Financial Security Agreements for the French Creek Elementary School Site Improvement Project. May I have a motion for the approval of East Antmead Land Development and Financial Security Agreement for the French Creek Elementary School Site Improvement Project as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Harmonos?
Second.
Dr. Otoli, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.11, The Approval of KNW Engineers for Geotechnical Testing on Main Campus for Design of the Building Additions. May I have a motion for the approval of KNW Engineers for Geotechnical Testing on Main Campus for the Design of the Building Additions in the Amount of $13,485 as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Harmonos?
Second.
Ooh, Dr. Melna Zach, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.12, Turf Fields and Track Replacement Project. May I have a motion for the approval of KNW Engineers to Provide the Scope of Work for the Replacement of the Synthetic Turf in All-Weather Track Surfaces, Including a Written Narrative Technical Specifications for Both the Track and the Turf Surfaces, And a Site Location Plan Indicating the Limits of Work at an Estimated Cost of $41,790.
So moved.
Mr. Harmonos?
Second.
Ms. Chevelle Fuller, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13 dot 13, The Approval of Professional Service Maintenance Agreement. May I have a motion for the approval of Professional Service Maintenance Agreements as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Harmonos?
Second.
Ms. Sabo, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda Item 14, Public Comment, 14.1, Public Comment. Information Proposals and Statements From Individuals or Delegations Pertaining to Any Item. Speakers are to indicate your name and township of residence. Speakers will be limited to not more than three minutes. Please understand that this is not a time for dialogue with the board. Rather, the board will listen to all comments and consider them in future deliberations. Also, if you have a question for the school board, please email all Board of School Directors at schoolboardmembers dot, no, sorry, schoolboardmembers@ojrst.net. For anyone online who would like to make a comment, please use the Raise Hands function. When it is your turn to speak, please state your name and township of residence.
I'm back. Mark Woolfree, South Coventry Township Alumni. All right, so your bus patrol program that you have on your buses, it's an electronic arm that automatically gives out tickets. People will pass your buses when the system believes you may have passed it when you shouldn't have legally. So the process goes, you get a letter, parent. That one went well. That letter was okay. That letter came actually addressed from Commonwealth Pennsylvania School Bus Program and from OJ Roberts with your logo on it. However, at one point, I, once we got that and I looked at the video and saw, clearly, we were not guilty of that. I made a, I peeled it. And I got a letter from, literally from Bus Patrol, but it was not actually from Bus Patrol. It didn't say, it says Miami Department, Police Department, Florida School, and sincerely Florida School Bus Infraction Detection Enforcement. That is who replied to my request for an appeal. Florida School Bus Infraction Detection Enforcement Payment Processing, you know, blah, blah, blah. This is, this is your vendor, Bus Patrol. I proceeded to have that hearing, which then turned out to be a Pennsylvania Department of Transportation person who was some type of a quasi-judge. He had stains all over his shirt. He had a, he was, he looked, I was really, did not understand what I was seeing when this person was telling me that he was going to adjudicate this case. He was, he was a mess. Not a good representative of the school district or Pennsylvania. And then I, so he said he did not care what the law said about when you pass a bus, that the bus says you can, you can't pass it once the arm is out and the red lights are on. The red lights won't go until the arm goes. And on, but it does not say you can't pass a bus when yellow lights are flashing. However, once again, that's how they, that's how they're adjudicating it. And your school bus drivers are encouraging people to pass them with yellow lights flashing. And then, so then I, I, so I peeled his ruling because eventually it came through as guilty. And all that letter, all that letter, let me put that one. That was actually the worst one of all the, or all the letters we got from, from the school. It was actually addressed to someone else. It had our certification number on it, my, or the violation for my vehicle. But it was to, I'm not going to name, put their name out here because I looked them up online and they, it is a real person. They live out in Pittsburgh somewhere. But it was a, that was who was listed on the, you're, you're, we found you guilty, not my name, your violation number, correct violation number. But then this other person's name again. So that was, that was, that was a, I didn't like that at all. So it went down, I, I appealed that, went down to Judge Hipple down here at the corner, went into that hearing. Your police officer never showed up. Your officer did not show for the hearing. So I, I, I wasn't, I was kind of feeling it was probably going to happen, that they weren't going to show. I wouldn't have showed when, if I'd seen this evidence of just.
Mr. Woolfree, we have hit three minutes.
All right.
Sorry.
Mock trial students the chance to go and speak. They're going to speak next. I have emailed, we've talked about this, all of us, public comment. I just want to implore publicly for anybody that's listening.
Excuse me, can you state your name and township?
Heather McCurry, Heather McCurry, Heather McCurry, East Coventry. Been an attorney for 32 years. Mock trial, offering that to the students in this district was my happy place. Getting OJ to the top was my goal. And we were on our way last year when we had a bad kind of understanding about how to handle high school children. We had run that club for seven years without an incident like we had last year. And while we can go back and say, should have, would have, could have done it differently, the fact is, right now, you have over 36 children wanting to compete, which was the purpose of this club. When I, when we had emails between us, I stepped away for a minute. Right now, if you need somebody to take these 36 children, I will do it. We had a team of volunteers that included Claire Hampton. Alumni started a college mock trial team. We had a DA here. We had volunteer attorneys in the community that volunteered to judge at the BFI, which gives these children a discount. There are so many policies that apply to this. I don't understand what's going on where we can't just offer these kids this opportunity. There were actually, the key thing about mock trial that I was proud of, and, you know, you guys, the board, are in charge of this. Many of you supported this team. You came out, you helped, you supported crazy notions of what we were going to do. But this is a volunteer-run program and it was open to everybody. There were no cuts on mock trial. There were clear expectations. You got a letter last year from my mock trial co-advisor, who I think is listening in, that said, as long as you showed up, there were clear expectations and you put the work in, you didn't even have to come to every meeting. You just needed to commit. You would get a chance to compete. That's why we increased it from one team of seven that started in the beginning to over 21 students. We only had to turn away one student one time because the wrestling coach would not make accommodations for us. Not that we wouldn't make accommodations for the wrestling schedule. The wrestling coach wouldn't do it for us. There is only about 262 public schools that offer mock trial. It's a privilege to have this. And it was a privilege that was at this school. And right now, as I said before, I got four invitations for our school to compete. So what are we going to do about this? Without having the club approved tonight, how is money going to get paid in so these students can go? OM, I think the school pays some of the entry fees. The first one's November 8th, that Malvern Prep is sponsoring. The next one is November 22nd, that, and that is the feeder one to BFI. If this school does not compete, they don't commit to the BFI, to the virtual one at Penn. Right now, they're holding that spot. And that spot is the feeder to BFI. That invite comes out on October 30th. It took literally four years to get an invitation for this school to get in there. So I think really, everybody needs to make a commitment to allow those 36 students the opportunity to do this. Sadness is when I hear a four-year team member who is an IEP.
Thank you, Ms. McCurry.
His mother telling me that he's not allowed to be in the club. That's really sad for everybody in this room.
Hello, members of the OJ Roberts School Board. I'm Shrestha Simon Tula and I'm from West Vincent.
And I'm Ayesha Mohammed. I'm also from West Vincent Township.
We are both sophomores at the high school. And two other students and us are trying to create a student-led initiative called Green Schools Campaign at OJ Roberts, which collaborates with the Climate Reality Program. And our goal is to transfer schools to reusable and clean energy to help protect the environment.
Last year, we spoke with you and we were able to get your approval for starting the club. But in order for the principal to get our, to get, to approve this club, we have to be able to know the grant information for the, we have to be able to know the grant information because last year, we know that an elementary school got the grant for a solar panel, but there wasn't enough timeframe because I believe it was six months. But that wasn't enough to like get all the planning ready and like actually install the solar panels. And we've also emailed you during the summer about this. And if possible, would you be able to like, you know, us back about the grant information so we can like do our research and then be able to start this club?
Also, from the information we have received, we know that the school has received a grant from the PA Department of Community and Economic Development to cover 50% of the solar installation on three elementary schools, which includes North Coventry, East Coventry, and East Vincent. And we know that the goal was to use funding from previously past tax credits to cover the remainder. We also know that funding is being pulled by an administration in DC and this is providing deadlines, which specific work must be done to qualify for a reimbursement. We have come, we have come up with some ideas to help with the current situation, including fundraisers such as a 5K run raffle, car washes, or a talent show. We can help by finding community donations, gathering sponsors, and applying for other funding and grants. We also urge you to let us create a resolution to implement clean energy solutions for the district, which can include solar panel installation, geothermal energy systems, and other energy efficiency upgrades. Creating a resolution implements a long-term goal for the district to reach. And as a group of students running this campaign, we want to be able to help you with other students and community support in the journey to create a sustainable school.
We also would love to help out with any problems that you might have. And we know that there are a lot of students interested to help out the community and schools, aid the environment through clean energy. And creating a resolution implements a long-term goal for the district to reach. And as a group of students running this campaign, we want to be able to help you with other students and community support in the journey to create a sustainable school. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Mark Woolfree, South Coventry Alumni. So last piece of right-to-no requests related to bus patrol. I'll let you know that it came back as records, no responsive records, in indicating that they have no record that anybody ever looked at the videos, any videos that the school has of, of people passing a bus. There's no indication that those videos have ever been looked at by anybody, by your own system that you're using with bus patrol. It has a, an audit function, keeps records of when records are looked at. And your right-to-no request came back to me with a response of no responsive records. So you have no record that anybody ever actually looked at the videos. And, and yet, your officers are signing off on these, saying, yes, we did look at these. That is part of the law. The law says someone must look at the video and sign off on it. It's written right on the, the form that we received from Bus Patrol. Your officer's signature stating that they looked at it, but your system says there's no record of it happening. That's, that's a problem. There's no training for him or the other officers on your campus that might do this for the school or how to operate this school bus patrol system. There's no training for your school bus drivers and there's no training related to it for anybody involved. I, I, I wrote a very broadband right to no request and all, and most of it came back with no responsive records. Although the one was I, kind of interesting. The state police does not want to work with Bus Patrol. That was one of the right to no request responses. Um, so I'm not sure if that's causing a problem in South Coventry because you, I don't know if you're off, why your officer didn't show up to the hearing or if he was expecting someone from the state to, that I can't, I can't figure out what's going on there. Um, but all in all, it's, it feels like a very broken program. It was not set up correctly. They're sending letters out to wrong people, wrong places, from wrong states. And your bus drivers are encouraging people to break the law, supposedly. By telling us to pass buses with yellow flashing lights, which isn't breaking the law, but the Department of Transportation Special Adjudicator says he's going to rule you guilty anyway if he sees that. So I'm not quite sure what's going on here, but this, please, this school needs to get this, this program under, find a new vendor. I've asked Bus Patrol for records related to this. They denied a right to no request. They just, we're not giving you anything. We don't care what you ask for. We don't care how many times you ask for it. You can email to us, call us, they don't care. They're not giving us anything. So it's, I, I, I feel like going to the Attorney General's office on that point because they're refusing. Alright, you have a good night. Thank you very much.
So Heather McCurry, Ginnys Coventry, I think we can come up on more than one topic. So I wrote a letter in after the last board meeting and I never got a response about, I remember I wrote it because it was.
Are we still talking about the same topic?
No, it's a new topic. I wrote a letter to this board after the working session about what I encountered on my way in and when I left. And that was a safety concern, right? When I was driving in by what I call the old tennis courts, or the baseball field on one and the tennis courts on the other, old tennis, the parking lot. A woman pulled up next to me and let her child out right next to me, like I was in the right lane, she was in the left, right? And the kid ran across the traffic like right in front of me, right? So imagine if I was a brand-new driver, not somebody that's been around for a while. Then when I left, there was a child that ran across from the baseball field across the middle of the road. And what I suggested was that if there's going to be youth programs up here at night, then somebody actually, I put in my email, assess those activities with enough money to cover a security guard. What I found out was that the youth programs are already assessed a security fee. So I think that would actually be, I'm not like, Mrs. Blue had already talked about the turf fields, but I think that's a really problem. There are young student drivers in this district and somebody needs to be looking out for their safety when there's so many other people running around like that. Thank you.
Christopher C., if you can unmute and please state your full name and township of residence.
Yes. Christopher Carroll, West Vincent Township. Uh, my son is in eleventh grade, has been at OJ since kindergarten, loves it. Um, very few hiccups along the way in the grand scheme of things. Some years ago, when he was in elementary school and I was thinking about how we can stem accidental firearm injuries and deaths, I had the idea that the school really should go beyond politics and somehow implement like they do drug and alcohol and sex education, which is age-appropriate K through twelve. They should do the same thing for firearm safety. And I think if we educate kids on really what to do when they encounter firearms and, and how to appropriately respond if a firearm is in that child's vicinity, you will go a long way to reducing accidental firearm deaths and injuries by children. I did speak to Ed Smith at the time, who was my son's principal and the chief of police of West Vincent Township, who I've known for twenty-five years and is a, um, a really great stand-up guy. And, you know, while these men agreed with me in principle, given the politics in the United States, they said it was just not going to be possible. And I really think we need to kind of push through on this and say, damn the fallout from it, you know? Our, our job here is to, to save lives. And I think bringing in age-appropriate firearm training or safety, I should say, uh, K through twelve grade is something you should really consider if you want to try to help make a dent in, in gun deaths and injuries in the United States. That's it.
We are moving on to agenda item fifteen, board discussion follow-up and request for information. Is there any board discussion follow-up or request for information at this time?
Um, I would like to request info on the training that our bus drivers do get. Um, and I'd also like to request info on the, the, um, Bus Patrol.
Yeah, to follow up on that. Um, we, I think that this was implemented, you know, a number of years ago and there's been a number of hiccups along the way. And my understanding is that Bus Patrol is an independent vendor and we don't do anything with it. They go do their thing and we're kind of hands-off on that. Um, and we've had a number of complaints, I think, over the years of, you know, Mr. Wolfreys and a few other people. And maybe it's something we should consider, you know, definitely reaching out to Bus Patrol and seeing if they can smooth things out, uh, training our bus drivers and maybe even putting this thing on pause for a while. I, I think there's no benefit to the district as well. The only benefit that we have at the moment is that, you know, people are paying better attention to the buses, but I don't think we're getting any financial benefit on it at this point. Is that correct?
Typically, under the Bus Patrol agreements, the district does recover a share of the fine imposed.
I, I think that was presented to us, but I think in actuality it was almost nothing. Something we could look into, David.
I believe we get about twenty-five dollars of, of.
So just, you know, I think, you know, if it's causing a lot of headache and heartache and it's not really doing what it's supposed to and it's a mess, I think we've got to, you know, take a look at that.
I also do think there's room, I, I too have gotten the wave on at flashing yellows from buses multiple times in our district. Um, and I think it is a, a training issue that we need to discuss further. Um, because I have absolutely been encouraged to pass a stopped bus by the drivers. As someone who drives in and around this community through those school hours, it certainly is happening.
Yeah, I would agree. We're, I think about two years in the Bus Patrol now and it's probably time to present information on it at a working session. I think we can answer, answer those questions. So we'll talk with our team and we'll, we'll set up a presentation to just share information regarding it. But I've heard some of the same concerns, the waving through yellow lights that is happening. I know there have been discussions with the bus drivers to not do that, but I know that was a problem. So I really can't say how it is right now, but I've heard some of the same, uh, some of the same complaints. Um, so we'll, we'll provide information to the board in an upcoming meeting.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to commend the young ladies from West Vincent on their initiative. Um, can we have someone from the Building and Grounds Department reach out to them and lie in some with them on their initiatives?
Sure, absolutely.
And then the final thing, this mock trial thing, that's a high school level thing. I think that's, Mr. Kohler should follow up with that. I don't, it's not a board level.
Correct. And I believe Mr. Kohler has working on.
That's all. Thank you.
Anything additional at this time?
Um, with regards to the age-appropriate training on gun safety, I do believe that there are ways to navigate that in a nonpartisan way. You know, I've, I've heard of independent organizations that, you know, done polls across people with a variety of viewpoints on gun ownership and the vast majority of gun owners and non-gun owners agree that children should know what to do if they encounter a firearm in their home. So, um, you know, if it is possible to find a, a recommended training, whether we connect with our local police department or whoever, I, I think that would be good to offer to our children. And I'm saying this as somebody who had to instruct her toddlers how to deal with, what do you do if you find a firearm? Because my father-in-law had guns unsecured around the house. I was not able to convince him to, you know, have his house organized otherwise, so I had to address it as much as a parent. And if we can help support our students by giving them the information on how to handle a situation like that, I think it's to everyone's advantage.
That's a good point. I agree. I don't think it's a partisan issue at all. I mean, it's, you know, we have traffic, we have you know, cars, we have all kinds of different safeties and guns are present in our community. So, you know, the possibility of someone encountering one, whether they like it or don't like it, that's irrelevant. You should know how to handle it safely.
I would think our ROTC program, I'm sorry, our ROTC program, connections, bring in train.
Anything else at this time? Thank you all. Meeting is adjourned.